Good evening.
Sounds like it didn't work through the city hall.
The agenda for-
You're under, man.
We're- we can hear you, Ron.
I hope you understand that.
Okay.
The agenda-
I'm in for you, town.
Thank you.
The agenda for a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to be held on Monday, April 6, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the City Council Chambers at 301 South 5th Street will now come to order. Because of the health threat of the COVID-19 and the governor's order to limit gatherings to no more than 10, the City Council Chambers will be closed to the public. Citizens may call 1-567-316-0699 and enter PIN number 9368906888 to hear and participate in the discussion of the public meeting. Citizens' input will be limited to three minutes per citizen. You will not be required to submit a form in writing in advance, but you will be required once you are recognized to state your name, address, and the subject of which you wish to speak. We will have invocation by Councilman Ed DeGarris.
From our gracious heavenly Father, we come to thank your presence and invite you to be with us and help us do this business in the city. There's so much going on in the world, we know that you're watching over us and keeping us protected. Best that you clear people's minds of things and have them listen to the health professionals to get this over as fast as possible so we can all get back to our normal lives. Best of it. You clear our minds of negative things and let us just both talk about positive things for our city as we need positive in everything nowadays, and this will be so much better for our town or in the rest of the world to hear positive things first of all. In our presence, in your presence, amen.
Thank you. And now-
Admit.
And now the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman DeGarris. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Councilwoman Parson, here.
Councilman DeGarris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilman Black? Councilman Black? I believe he is present.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Young. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing none. Item six, citizens' input. I believe we have Mayor Pro Tim, Steve Davis?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to speak regarding the current health crisis that our city's dealing with in our country. We're seeing across the country many hospitals running out of bed spaces due to the treatment of COVID-19. I pray this is a scenario that our community and region do not have to face. However, I think it is important we be prepared to utilize the resources we have to support our local hospital in the event such site support is needed. To that effect, I would propose that the council, that we take action as a consensus and make the Coliseum available if needed as an overflow location site or any other need associated with this crisis as our hospital, healthcare providers, and leaders deem necessary.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's a good thought.
Can I make a statement just for the conference?
Please.
If you're listening in on the conference call, could you please mute your phone until you have some- until you want to speak? It takes care of the background noise. Thank you.
I would just hope that that would be a consensus, and I know we're all in that direction and are regarding that, but I would just encourage us to have a consensus to make available the Coliseum here as needed by our hospital and medical practitioners and leaders, so.
From the information I've heard and read from texts from Mr. Massingham and City Attorney, I think with all the health professionals that they're dealing with, if that came forward, I would have no problem with Mr. Massingham making that determination if it's feasible with the health concerns and things that goes with it.
I'm okay with that. I'm in agreement with that.
And we have discussed that in some of our meetings, if it comes to that. You know, the old Luci Hospital on Highway 67 has beds, and of course, the current hospital. If that would get filled, really, there is no other place around in our community other than the Coliseum, and that would definitely work. We would just have to work with our healthcare professionals to make it happen.
Okay. So I guess everyone would be in agreement with that. We need not take any type of vote, but just a gentle consensus. Okay?
And I would certainly let you all know beforehand if that comes up, so.
Very well. Thank you. Is anyone in the audience listening have any input on any item that was not on the printed agenda? Hearing none?
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, Jeff Christmas here, and I'll give you a little bit of input. We're having real difficult time understanding.
Okay.
I don't know how many citizens are on the phone.
Okay.
Again, I will make my point-
Give us your name and address, sir. Just state your full name and address. Just bear with us for a minute.
Council, you may want to go ahead and dial in as well so that when you're speaking, they can hear you through your phone as well. We're not having a problem hearing here, but there's some background noise. Star Six will mute and unmute your phone if that is helpful.
It's supposed to be muted?
Yes. What did you say to mute? Star Six? Star Six.
I think it mutes already. Star-
It mutes then.
Star Six unmuted.
Unmuted. Star Six unmuted.
I think it does either want, what Matt's telling you.
So we want it unmute? Or unmute?
It advises that you mute unless you're speaking.
Oh, okay.
Have yours on speaker? Do you have yours on speaker? Your phone?
I can't.
Well, I just wonder. I didn't know if it was better that way or not. Nope.
Nope. No, not on speaker.
Okay. Now, Mr. Christmas, can you hear us any better?
Won't let me. Mine won't let me.
Yes, Mayor, that is very much better.
Okay. Okay, sir. Did you have something else that you wanted to say?
No, the only point was to print the bills and resolutions online so that we can have those when the meeting begins also. That will be all from mine and put tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
We did post our ordinances and resolutions in the window of the City Hall, so they were available to the public.
Okay. Thank you.
We have several tonight.
Is there anyone else in the listening audience that would like to speak? If not, item seven, workshop items for discussion. Mr. Winters, would you please present item A through D under workshop?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is mine.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So the first four items on the workshop agenda are all mine, and they're all closely related, so as long as Council Richardson and the Council don't have a problem with it, I would, as an overall project, kind of present them all at one time. I understand you're going to have to come at the- on each one, but it's okay to just kind of explain all of them together so you kind of get the overall picture of the larger project.
Yes, sir. Please do.
So the- these are four applications for conditional use permits to operate drive-up windows in the development at the corner of Shelby Road and Tucker Road. This project is being developed by RF, our LOS investment group, in care of John and Lorraine Hurst of 6776 Heritage Drive. These properties are all located in the C2 General Commercial District. So item A is 2779 Tucker Road, Suite 1. In this location, there's proposed to be a second location of box truck coffee shop. From the maps, the site plan you've been provided, this drive-up window will be on the rear of that long proposed building. That's actually, I mean, there's quite a bit of construction down on that building, but that's where the proposed location for that window is. Item B is 2779 Tucker Road, Suite 9, which would be at the east end of that building. I believe on your site plan, it may say ice cream. I think that was some initial talks and discussion. I think also now it's kind of changed a little bit. She's been talking with the owners of the lunchbox, and that's what's proposed to go in there. The third location is a building that's to the front of this development that faces Tucker Road, so on the east end of that building, but the footings of that building are forward. The structure hasn't been started yet. They're proposing a bakery to be on that one. That likely be- that building faced to the north of that drive-up window likely would be on the rear of that building. And then the fourth location, item D, is 2789 Tucker Road, and that's the standalone building that's the closest to completion as any of them on the side. That's actually a proposed to be a location for Lemonade House Grill, and the window for that one would be on the northern side, which will be the rear of that building. The only one of these buildings that's proposed to have a menu board where someone would actually drive up and order and then wait for their order is the coffee shop location. The Lemonade House, the lunchbox, those places are going to be more of a drive-up window. You'll call in, or you'll use an app, and you'll order, and then you'll go there and you'll pick it up, so you're not ordering and waiting when your food is ready to be prepared. It'll be ready when you get there for you to pick up, and so there won't be lines with those windows like, you know, you would expect to see at a fast food kind of restaurant. The planning and zoning commission heard all four of these proposals and is recommending approval of these proposals based on the info they received. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to attempt to answer them. I believe Ms. Hurst was going to attempt to call in tonight if you had any questions from her also.
Any questions from the council?
Mayor, I motion that we move these items A, B, C, and D to the voting session tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item E, the council will review a proposed resolution allowing the city to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, this item is on here. Basically, when we're able to issue bonds for the construction of the police department, we want in that proposal that we could be reimbursed for the land that was purchased, and really, that's all this has to deal with. The amount on the resolution really has nothing to do with the amount that the bonds are going to be of the total amount we are borrowing. That will come at a later date. But like I said, since we want to be reimbursed for the property that was bought, we have to do that within 60 days prior to the closing, and that's why this item is on here. This has nothing to do really with the issuance of the bonds. That will come at a later date.
Any further discussion on that item?
I'll make a motion. We move this to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item eight, action required items. Item AA, Bill Number 1821. The City Council will take action on an ordinance adopting the pace property, the property-assessed clean energy program.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 8221.
Second. Motion for second reading of Bill 8221.
Is he not going to read the first? We had a motion and a second for the first reading.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance enabling the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to join the Missouri Clean Energy District pursuant to state statute and stating the terms under which the city will conduct activities as a member of said district.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8221.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Counselor.
An ordinance enabling the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to join the Missouri Clean Energy District pursuant to state statute and stating the terms under which the city will conduct activities as a member of said district.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further- any discussion? Clerk Young.
Councilman Black? He may still unmute. Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman Black? Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Bill Number 8221 is adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 8222. The City Council will take action on an ordinance annexing certain property at 3392 Canal Boulevard with a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission to zone the property as RS1 Rural Residential.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8222.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property in the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being described as 3392 Canal Boulevard, Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and owned by Score LLC.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8222.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being described as 3392 Canal Boulevard, Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and owned by Score LLC.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8222.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black? Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. Bill Number 8222 is adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 8223. The City Council will take action on an ordinance regarding a conditional use permit to operate an independent and assisted living facility for up to seven- for up to 70 patrons located at 3392 Canal Boulevard.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8223. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Score LLC for the operation of an independent and assisted living facility at 3392 Canal Boulevard in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Score LLC for the operation of an independent and assisted living facility at 3392 Canal Boulevard in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8223.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black? Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8223 is adopted. Item DD, Bill Number 1824. The City Council will take action on an ordinance rezoning property from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional for future commercial use. The property lies between Katy Lane and Baron Road. The property owner is John D. Barber and the Barber family. This item has been recommended to be tabled because we can't have the public here at this time.
First read and second read, and then tabled.
Okay. Okay.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8224.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance rezoning property located east of 2700 Katy Lane and north of 2438 Katy Lane from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8224.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance rezoning property located east of 2700 Katy Lane and north of 2438 Katy Lane from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional.
Mayor, I make a motion that this be tabled at this time generally.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Do we need a roll call on that? Or just voice?
No, just a voice vote is sufficient.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. This will be tabled till a little later. Later date. Item EE, Bill Number 8225. The City Council will take action on an ordinance implementing a tobacco-free policy for city-owned outdoor recreation areas.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8225.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 235, relating to a tobacco-free policy for outdoor recreational facilities in the City of Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8225.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 235, relating to a tobacco-free policy for outdoor recreational facilities in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black? Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. Bill Number 8225 is adopted. Item FF, Bill Number 8226. The City Council will take action on an ordinance approving and adding to the administrative services agreements by and between the City of Poplar Bluff and Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8226.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to execute an addendum to an agreement for administrative services between the City of Poplar Bluff and Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8226.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to execute an addendum to an agreement for administrative services- an addendum to an agreement for administrative services between the city of Poplar Bluff and Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission.
Motion for adoption of bill 8226.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson. Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black. Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. Thank you, Clerk Young. Bill number 8227 is adopted, or I'm sorry, 8226. Item GG, bill number 8227. The city council will take action on an ordinance regarding a conditional use permit for a drive-through window at 27th, at 2779 Tucker Road, Suite 1.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8227.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to RLOS Investment Group LLC and John and Lilian Hurst to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2779 Tucker Road, Suite 1, in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading of bill 8227.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to RLOS Investment Group LLC and John and Lilian Hurst to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2779 Tucker Road, Suite 1, in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson. Councilman Black. Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Bill number 8, 8227 is adopted. Item HH, bill number 8228. The city council will take action on an ordinance regarding a conditional use permit for a drive-through window at 27th 79 Tucker Road, Suite 9.
Motion for first reading of bill 8228.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to RLOS Investment Group LLC and John and Lilian Hurst to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2779 Tucker Road, Suite 9, in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to RLOS Investment Group LLC and John and Lilian Hurst to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2779 Tucker Road, Suite 9, in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black. Councilwoman Parson. Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Bill number 8228 is adopted. Item II, bill number 8229. The city council will take action on an ordinance regarding a conditional use permit for a drive-through window at 2797 Tucker Road.
Motion for first reading of bill 8229.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to RLOS Investment Group LLC and John and Lilian Hurst to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2797 Tucker Road in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading of bill 8229.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to RLOS Investment Group LLC and John and Lilian Hurst to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2797 Tucker Road in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black. Councilwoman Parson. Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Bill number 8229 is adopted. Item JJ, bill number 8230. The city council will take action on an ordinance regarding a conditional use permit for a drive-through window at 2789 Tucker Road.
Motion for first reading of bill 8230.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to RLOS Investment Group LLC and John and Lilian Hurst to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2789 Tucker Road in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading of bill 8230.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to RLOS Investment Group LLC and John and Lilian Hurst to permit, permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2789 Tucker Road in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption of bill 8230.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson. Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black. Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Bill number 8230 is adopted. Item KK, resolution number 1920. The city council will take action on a resolution appointing directors for a three-year term to the Sycamore Street Community Improvement District Board of Directors.
Motion for the reading of resolution number 1920.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Counselor.
A resolution of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the Sycamore Street Community Improvement District Board of Directors.
Motion for adoption of bill, of resolution 1920.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black. Councilwoman Parson. Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. Resolution number 1920 is adopted. Item LL, resolution number 1921. The city council will take action on a resolution determining the intent of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures.
Motion for reading of resolution 1921.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Counselor.
A resolution determining the intent of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black. Councilwoman Parson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. Resolution number 1921 is adopted. Thank you. Item nine, the city managers report.
Yes, just a few items, kind of an update on the COVID-19. We continue to meet daily at the police department and the emergency operations center with city and county officials, health center, and health professionals to discuss daily items to deal with COVID-19. As most of you know, the governor issued a stay-at-home order on Friday, and I would just ask everybody to please stay at home unless you need to get out and buy groceries and medical procedures, things like that. The only other item is, is the Red Cross is doing a blood drive at the Black River Coliseum from 12 noon to 6 p.m. They did one today, they're doing one Tuesday and Wednesday at the Coliseum. If you would like to donate blood, which is, we are really in need of blood right now, you can go on the Red Cross website and pre-register, and then they will give you a time to go in and donate the blood. So we encourage anybody that can do that to please do so. Only other item is, eventually, probably in the next few weeks, I will come to the council and give you kind of an idea of what we're facing budget-wise with no sales tax coming in, or not, a lot less sales tax coming in. As you know, 45% of our general fund budget is sales tax that's produced here in the city. We have a lot of stores closed, restaurants closed, other than drive-through and pickup orders, clothing stores closed. It's going to make a big dent in our budget this year unless the government, federal or state government, steps in and comes up with an idea on how to help cities with declining sales tax revenue. We will have to make some cuts, but I will bring those several different ideas to you as soon as I can. That's all I have.
Any further comments from the council? If there be none, I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? We adjourn.